I call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, March 25th, 2019, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bryce Steinem has the approval of the minutes of the March 11th, 2019, regular meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the Board approve the minutes of the March 11th, 2019, meeting as submitted.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay. Past the hour 7:00 PM, we have a joint public hearing with the Appropriations Committee, Fiscal Year 2020 proposed budget. Elaine, do you want to call your committee into order?
I'll call the Appropriations Committee into order.
Excellent. Well, to see, welcome this evening. As required by the Charter, this is a joint public hearing between the Selectmen and the Appropriations Committee. The Appropriations Committee has been meeting regularly, going through the glory details of the budget. You all folks had a joint meeting going back in December, along with the K-28 School Committee, to set the table for this budget, and we reviewed not only our trends 10 years backwards, but forecast forward five years. And this is really sort of the culmination, at this point, of where we are for the fiscal 20 budget. I'll dispense any suspense here. There's nothing radical in this budget in terms of the level of services. It's a level service budget, not to be confused with a level funded budget. Things have increased. Expenses increased, personnel costs will increase, but basically, it's a level service budget. The goal here is to maintain the current level of services with some minor adjustments where needed and appropriate. Revenue projections are modest, and particularly with regard to state aid and new growth. Things are not, they're not going in the wrong direction. They continue to move in the right direction, albeit at a slower pace, I think, than everybody would like to see. But the primary focus for this evening, we're going to go through a lot of information here. By the way, before I get started, I've got handouts of the presentation. I have a budget message that is sort of the companion document to the presentation with more detail and explanation, and there's also a copy of the warrant up here. And the warrant, at the end, has the actual budget spreadsheets and tables that will be going to town meeting. In terms of the key things to discuss, what's in motion in this level service budget, there's really three things that are kind of hitting us hard in this particular cycle. One is the assessment for the Algonquin Regional High School. The other is solid waste and recycling, particularly the recycling component of that contract. And last but not least is our retirement assessment. And so, none of these things should be a surprise to you. We talked about them, like I said, back in December, but these are things that are sort of the budget drivers, if you will. You know, I start every budget discussion talking about the scales of balance and sustainability. And, you know, it's always important, because when we all get together, right, what are we focused on? We're focused on the current fiscal year. We're looking at the next 12 months. And we cannot do that without taking into consideration the long-term implications of what we're deciding. Things like debt, infrastructure, unfunded liabilities, and not the least of all, is affordability. So you've got to have that balance. You know, everybody talks about sustainable budget practices, sustainable budget, right? Well, this is the balance that you need to have in order to be sustainable. You can't sacrifice long-term, long-term needs for short-term wants. And that's something that this budget, like every budget I've ever brought you, does well, good balance. So I'm going to begin by just recapping the four main goals that have been set, and historically, we've set at our December 13th meeting this past year. Now, this is the financial trend monitoring meeting that we have with all the boards and committees. And there's four primary goals. There are many objectives within these, and if you look in the budget message, you have not only the goals, but all of the individual objectives that go with each one. I'm not going to read those to you, but it's important to have this context when we start talking about the upcoming budget. But the first is to protect and improve the town's overall financial condition. This is, again, that perspective of being able to maintain our current level of services, being able to withstand if the state goes into a recession and we start seeing revenues contracting, we need to be able to make our way and navigate through that. And also, we need to be able to meet, you know, natural changes in service delivery demands. You know, if you're growing as a community, you need some more police or public safety, or if your school population's going up, you need to be able to meet that with additional resources. So to be able to protect our overall financial condition means to meet all of those demands. The second is one that I'm very fond of talking about, and that is to make sure that we put a budget together that doesn't have any gimmicks. We have long-term financial policies that we've all agreed to. These are the rules of engagement. We have these, it's like I always say, you can't play football or backgammon if you don't have rules on the front end. Otherwise, it's chaos. Well, town meeting is the same thing. It's chaos if you don't have clear rules of engagement that everybody has agreed upon. So what's different in our town from many others is that all the boards and committees have agreed on our policies, our rules of engagement. So when we get to town meeting, we're not arguing about whether or not this is something that we would or wouldn't be able to do. We've agreed on that. The other is that we don't have any one-time gimmicks. Now, I say to you oftentimes, you know, if I were within a couple of years of retirement, and I'm not, but if I were, I could bring you, I could bring you basically no tax increase budget for probably two years straight, and I'd be a hero until year three or four. And it's the same thing for you and your personal lives. You know, if you want to expand your, your, your status or your lifestyle, well, you know, just stop putting money aside for your retirement. Stop taking care of your vehicle, stop maintaining your furnace. You know, you can do all sorts of things to artificially inflate your, your budget for a short term. But as we all know, that practice will catch up to you, and it will cost you more down the line. So this budget, like every budget, has that long-term perspective. We're taking care of capital needs, we're taking care of our unfunded liabilities, we're not, we're not paying things in advance or pushing off expenses from one fiscal year to another, and that's very important, because when you look around the state, and I get this comment a lot of times, people say, "Well, what about the town of so-and-so does this?" Or "The town of so-and-so does that." And I said, "Yeah, that's fine. I have a friend who puts no money aside for retirement, and he's just going to figure it out when he gets older." I'm not comfortable with that, and you, as board members and taxpayers, shouldn't be comfortable with that on a larger scale for the town. Affordability is something we spend a lot of time talking about. We talk about that in great detail in December, because unlike a lot of other communities, we are not up against the wall in terms of Prop. 2 and 1/2. So we have the ability to, to flex a little bit. And by that, I mean, you know, if you're at the limits of Prop. 2 and 1/2 and you need another $100,000, you have to go for an override. And right now, there's a 20-year low in approved overrides statewide. There's not a lot of appetite for that. But luckily, we have levy capacity, which means we have the ability, we have a pressure leaf valve, where we can, we can dip into that levy capacity and hopefully replenish it, and this little bit of ebb and flow from year to year for us. That is a very enviable position to be in. A lot of communities aren't there. Once you get your back against the wall, there's literally no place to go. And you find yourself cutting things that if you were a little bit more confident in how much new growth you might get, you know, you might not have to do that. The last one I talked a little bit about, and that's a long-run solution. You know, it's, it's, it's important to put the wants and needs for the current fiscal year forward, but it has to be in that context of making sure that you're still investing in your infrastructure, you're still replacing your equipment, you're still dealing with your long-term liabilities, your pension liabilities, and your overrep liabilities. So the budget that I've brought forward to you tonight balances all of these things and meets all of these goals. So let's talk about revenue assumptions. The town budget is really based on four primary sources of revenue. It's taxes, available funds, which is free cash, local receipts, and state aid. So 80% of our budget is local, is taxes, and these are local taxes. That is pretty much how you would see most communities of our, similar to us, that are basically bedroom communities. We happen to actually have a pretty decent, a pretty decent business sector. So about 20% of our tax base, or our taxes, are basically paid for from the business sector, industrial and commercial primarily. But we're looking at about a 5.2% increase in, in taxes, and that's comprised of three things. New growth, we're estimating about $30 million, which will give us a little over half a million dollars in new tax revenues. These are new developments that we anticipate coming online. Those taxes, that tax amount also includes debt-excluded projects that the residents have authorized us to tax them above and beyond the limits, or outside of the limits of Prop. 2 and 1/2. And those include Colbert Street, the high school project, the library project, the senior center project, and most recently, Lincoln. Now, the thing that I was just talking about, that levy capacity, this particular year, we have, we have a few things that are going on, not the least of which, or the primary thing, is the high school assessment. And we're going to talk in a little more detail about the high school assessment this year, but basically, we have shifting enrollment at our regional high school, which we share with Southborough. That shifting enrollment, in turn, is shifting the assessment significantly onto Northborough this year. In order to meet a level service budget, and in order to meet the minimum needs of the Algonquin Regional High School, we are going to have to dip into our levy capacity by $900,000, basically. Now, that is a significant amount. Now, just keep this in mind, when we met in December, you know, we were watching and we were aware that this was coming. So the budget that's being proposed tonight, including the use of the levy capacity, is almost exactly in line with what you represented back in December. And, and the reason for that is, we'll talk about in a moment, working with the superintendent and the, and the school committee, we were able, despite the fact that the high school assessment came in high, we were able to bring the K-28 budget and the overall high school budget in at a lower amount. But make no mistake about it, we are going to be dipping in the levy capacity in order to maintain the current level of services. And that's important for people to understand, because we're not, we're not growing the services. We're not doing anything wildly different. For us, this cycle, it's the high school assessment, it's enrollment, and there really isn't a lot that anybody can do about that. What I will tell you is, in years past, we've had high school assessments swing the other way, where we had a 0% or 1% increase in our assessment, and Southborough was screaming because theirs was 10%, 10%. So it ebbs and it flows. Now, the nice thing that we have is we have, as I said, the ability, because of the levy capacity, to ebb and flow with that enrollment, because we know in next year, things should be relatively flat. Jason's promised me, our finance director, I'm going to hold him to it on camera, in 2023, it's actually going to reverse, and we're going to see our enrollment declining and Southborough's going up, and you're going to see this exact opposite happen. And what I would anticipate is, over that time, we would, we would then replenish some of that levy capacity, so we're not, again, back up against the wall. That's why every December, we go through the exercise of showing you, based on all the assumptions, what do we see happening over the next five years to that levy capacity? Because if we see ourselves hitting that wall, where we have no ability to, to deal with unexpected things, then we may need to actually dial back the, the level service budget. We may need to actually pull things back. Thankfully, we haven't been there yet, and hopefully, we won't have to be in that position. But it's important to keep in mind. Free cash, we use one-time revenues in the operating budget, and we limit them to 1%. It's actually less than 1%. It's about $500,000, and that's based on our policy. So that's where we, that is our, our policy. We've been there for at least five or six years. Local receipts are level funded. Last year, we pushed those by $300,000. We saw more motor vehicle excise and more meals tax coming in, and so we pushed those up. This year, I don't see the ability to push those back. If you're watching what's happening to some of our restaurants, right now, that's a challenging sector in the business community right now. They're, they're having a little bit of trouble, so we're starting to see a bit of a contraction there. Last but not least, we've got state aid. We're projecting state aid to increase at 1%. Governor released his budget on January 23rd, it had a whopping 0.77% increase, so not even, they're 3/4 of 1%. It's about $41,000. That has been the pattern that we have seen throughout this entire recovery, despite the fact that we have been technically out of the recession for years. We've never seen more than 1 and 1/2, 1.6% increase in state aid, and because of that, we've seen an increasing reliance on our local tax base. Again, not unique to Northborough, but, but certainly, that is, that is exactly what we're seeing. So we're hoping, when the legislature, the House and the Senate take up their budgets and they get through joint, through their joint committee work, we tend to do a little bit better, so I'm comfortable with that, you know, 1% number, but, you know, $20,000 one way or another is not going to make or break a $70 million budget, so. So those are our revenue assumptions. I, I talked about state aid a little bit, but I always like to show this chart. So this is a 30-year history of state aid. These Vs are the recessionary periods. This is the last recession. I always say, "This one's different. It looks like a checkmark." You know, went down fast, but has recovered slowly. The point I'd like to make on this slide is, if you go here, this is fiscal 2003, you know, we didn't get back to that level until fiscal '17, and that's nominal dollars. Those are not adjusted for inflation. The difference is, our budget was smaller back in fiscal '03 versus fiscal '17 here. So in fiscal '03, state aid was over 13% of our budget. Today, it's 0.9%, it's 8.8, I believe, percent of our operating budget. So that concept that I just talked about, how, you know, our budget needs about a 3 and 1/2, 4% increase to maintain current services. Well, if state aid isn't, and the state isn't partnering in that, and they're giving us 1 or 1 and 1/2, then slowly, their share of our budget will continue to erode. And that's exactly what we've seen. So despite looking at this chart, where it looks like, you know, this is a positive trend, when you look at it from the perspective of a percentage of our budget, it's actually a negative trend, and it has been a negative trend for a long time. And you know this, because we track it on multiple different ways, and we discussed this in great detail in December. Overall, this pie chart represents what I just explained, which is taxes are about 80% of our budget, state aid is, again, about 8.8%. Local receipts are very stable, at about 6.8%. This is, this pie chart, I always make the joke, it looks like a giant Pac-Man eating all the little pieces of pie. Well, the giant Pac-Man is the taxes, but, but that is how most communities, unless they have a significant business sector, that is how they're financed. We are set to run the municipal operations based on local taxes. And the percentages here, outside of state aid, you know, this, like I said, going back years ago, used to be, you know, 13%. This has always hovered around 79 or 80%. Hasn't really moved much. This chart is in the handout, it's also in the warrant, but this is the budget in brief, and this brings everything together in one easy-to, well, it's an easy-to-read slide. I say that, as I get older, I have a harder time reading it. That's why it has to get bigger and bigger. This is the general fund. So these are all of the, the schools, the general government, the warrant articles, the debt exclusions. When you look all that together, the general fund, this budget that's going before town meeting is a 3.41% increase. There's nothing, you know, outlandish or wild here. We're looking at 3.1%. If you include the enterprise funds, water sewer and solid waste, and solid waste is one we will talk about in a little bit more detail, because that's one that is going up significantly. Overall, all funds, we're looking at about a 3.5% increase. So again, this is a level service budget, sustaining budget, but it's got a couple of hotspots in it that we, we do need to talk about. In general, you're looking at a 3.4% increase for the general fund, but I want to point out two things. In that, in that figure is a little over $816,000 for one-time capital, so that's not an expenditure that is building into the budget base and multiplying next year. It's, and again, we try to dedicate one-time revenues to one-time capital, but it's included in that number. The other is, $200,000 of that is going into the stabilization account. So stabilization is our rainy day fund, it's our financial reserve, so that money isn't actually being spent, has to be appropriated and accounted for, but it isn't being spent, it's being placed in our rainy day fund. So when you take that into account, you know, 3.4% including those two things is a very reasonable increase. So let's talk about the key budgets that most people are focused on. The Northborough K-28 school budget, as proposed, is going up 2.73%. Now, back in December, that target was 3 and 1/2%. Working with the school superintendent and the school committee, they were able to bring that down in order to give us a little bit more capacity for what's happening at the high school. Now, they didn't cut anything dramatic here. Their enrollment is down, and they were able to eliminate a couple of positions. So they have not impacted their class size, as Elaine will tell you, we spent a lot of time, a couple Saturdays ago, with the superintendent. The class size policy is intact, that's not an issue, but they do have less students, and they're able to cut some staffing. General government, so anything that isn't school-related, police, fire, DPW, general administration, that budget, again, target back in fiscal, target back in December was 3 and 1/2%. That's what we have coming in tonight, is a 3 and 1/2% increase. Acibit Valley, this is our regional tech school, their budget's coming in at a little over 10% increase, and again, it's driven by enrollment. Last year, they were down by, I think, $135,000 roughly, and it was just a matter of, you know, seven or eight less kids going there in fiscal '20. We've got four more kids, from 41 to 45, going there. Their assessment bounces, I wouldn't say wildly, but it bounces significantly every year, just based on whether or not a half a dozen kids are going there. Like I said, last year, they were down, this year, they're up about $78,000. This is the one to talk about. So this is the high school assessment. Right now, between the operating and the debt assessment, we're looking at about an 8% increase, about to $958,000. This is driven almost entirely by enrollment, and how that enrollment ripples through the Chapter 70 formula for the state for minimum local contributions. So it's enrollment, and enrollment's impact as a variable, and how it's weighted through this very elaborate formula. But at the gross budget level, the high school budget is going up 3%. If that budget goes down below 3%, you're talking about impacting teaching, staff, and making significant cuts. So I can't say enough about the willingness of the superintendent to work with the town. Again, we're all on one team, and that's the way it has always been, but seeing what's happening with these enrollments and the impact on our assessment at the high school, we've spent the last several months working with the schools to reduce the K-28 budget because of the lower enrollment, lower enrollment there, and to get this high school budget in at a 3% increase, which is the minimum that they can live with, without impacting the services, as I said. But we're still looking, you know, we're still looking at a $958,000 increase, so. If, just to put it in perspective, if the, if our assessment for the high school, not the budget, but if our assessment for the high school went up 3 and 1/2%, we would, we would be able to reduce our overall budget by about $550,000. We would need $550,000 less of that levy capacity to manage this issue. Again, I can't stress this enough, this is through no radical action or fault of the superintendent or the school committee. We just happen to have, you know, a bubble of kids going through, more at the high school, Southborough has less, and this ebbs and flows. And you'll see, the superintendent has a wonderful slide that shows, going back 10 or 15 years, how these assessments have bounced back and forth. Now, again, we're in the enviable position to have that levy capacity to deal with this, and hopefully, in a couple of years, it'll reverse, and our assessment will be much lower, and our friends in Southborough will have a higher assessment. Again, this is just the way it goes. But if you don't have that capacity, and the town of Northborough couldn't support that, then you'd be so, looking at, probably, you'd be looking at an override at the high, for the high school budget, because I think the superintendent and the school committee would be hard-pressed to, to be cutting staff over there when they're not doing anything, again, radically different. This is where the action is. When you look at the overall tax impact, and what, and the biggest issue impacting the fiscal '20 budget, it's the high school assessment, and when you look at what's driving it, it's very simply the enrollment. So nothing radical going on there in terms of additional staff, or new services, or new programs, it's simply enrollment. So in terms of expenditures, this is the other pie chart going the other way, the other Pac-Man going the other way. Schools are about 58, 59% of the overall budget. Town operating is about 21%. The good news, if you look at this piece, this pie right here, this is the insurance and benefits, it's about 13%. That's been relatively stable for us, and it's been relatively stable for us for quite a while, because we actively manage those benefits. And we'll talk a little bit more detail about that in a moment. But this pie chart, both in terms of the revenue sources and the expenditure, how things break out, there isn't, there isn't anything radically different than you've seen for the last eight to 10 years. So I've kind of given you, you know, this is an interesting budget hearing, because if you attend the budget hearing for the schools, right, they'll speak just about the schools, right? We have to account for the overall, big picture of the budget, which means how the schools fit in, how the revenues fit in, how all of the expenditures, including the debt exclusions and all of the expenses, and the health insurance for the K-28 employees, all that stuff fits in. So I've kind of given you an overview of, of what's happening in the general fund budget. What I want to do now is drop it down to talking about the general government budget, so not the schools, this is just the general government. And these are the, the five, five main things that are in motion for us that, that are worth talking about, in my opinion. The first is that fiscal '19, the year we're in right now, on June 30th of this year, 2019, all of the collective bargaining agreements expire. So we're in negotiations now. I hope we'll have some, if not all, settled before the start of the fiscal year, but at this point in time, we have to have a budget ready, and it has to go to town meeting. So all of the fiscal '20 wage increases are currently budgeted in a central account, which is standard practice. So as you look through the budgets themselves, the individual budget, each one has a disclaimer that says, "General wage increases for union and non-union staff are not included in those budgets." The other thing is, we also have a classification compensation study in plan that's ongoing right now, so that's well underway and close to wrapping up. The impacts of that are also budgeted centrally. When we look at a class comp study, we're trying to make sure that the town of Northborough's plan, compensation plan, is competitive. Ultimately, we need to be able to recruit and retain good people, and those of you in the private sector, or any sector for that matter, if you, if you have staff, or you're related to your HR practice in any way, they'll tell you, "This is the tightest job market in 50 years. It is very difficult to find and retain good people." So one of the things we want to make sure that we're doing is make sure that our wages and our compensation plans are competitive. So that's the process that's ongoing now. Again, that is accounted for in the budget, budgeted centrally. The one, the one staffing position that is being added in the general government side of the budget, or being proposed this year, is a facilities manager position. This position has been long overdue. I think my predecessor, 20 years ago, when he got here, said, "We really need a facilities manager." Everybody agreed, and we never got around to being able to have the capacity to fund it. I will tell you this, my office particularly, is being very heavily impacted right now to the point where we have to have some additional assistance with the facilities. We have a fire station building project that's ongoing, we picked up White Cliffs, we have the Old Town Hall that will be returning to us shortly. If we build a new fire station, we're going to have If we build a new fire station, we're going to have a vacant fire station. We're going to need to know what to do with it. We've got building issues here that are taking up quite a bit of my office staff time. We have a lot of, uh, of great projects that are funded by community preservation. The one that was funded last year to fix up the, uh, the library, the historic part of the library, that project is, is waiting until we get capacity in our office to put it out to bid, and to, uh, and to provide technical assistance to get that stuff going. In some respects, we're a victim of our own success, but we need, the time is, is now. We need a facilities manager, to the point where things are not going to get done, and not get done in a timely manner, and we need this, this position. And I know, I'm speaking to the choir, because for several years, many of you and many folks on the appropriations committee have said, "You need a facilities manager." Yes, but we did a long, comprehensive staffing study, and we made a policy decision to prioritize public safety. We've hired police, we've hired fire. We also made a priority to restore staff that was cut during the recession to DPW. So we've done all those things. This position is desperately needed. Unfortunately, I couldn't fit it in the budget entirely. So this position is budgeted at the six-month mark, so mid-year. It's the only way that I could fit it in, uh, to the budget. But I'm, I'm, I'm telling you now that that is the absolute priority in this, uh, in this budget round, in terms of the staffing. And I'd be happy to talk to anybody in any detail you'd like, and I hope everybody supports that. And right now, so it's budgeted for, it's in there for fifty thousand dollars. It's budgeted for roughly the midpoint in the fiscal year. The next big thing that we, we have on our docket is solid waste and recycling. You spent a good part of a prior meeting, border selectmen, as well as appropriation, talking about what's happening in the recycling market right now. The back book cover summary is China took itself out of the recycling market, and they were, they were the, the, take it seventy, eighty percent of all the recycling worldwide market. It's gone. They pulled themselves out. There is nobody to step into it, into their place. And so we're in this very, very awkward moment where the supply greatly outstrips the demand. So let me just put it in perspective. We pay, uh, we're, we're budgeted to pay about seventy-one dollars a ton to get rid of trash this year. Why do we encourage people to recycle, other than it's good for the environment? It's a twofer, right? It's good for the environment. What's the other reason?
Use our trash volume.
Reduces our tonnage, right? Which means we pay less, because recycling either costs less to get rid of, or in some instances, we get paid to take it. We're anticipating that's going to cost about eighty dollars a ton in the upcoming year to get rid of our recycling. Now, we're hoping this is short-term, but until the domestic market comes around, and more recycling plants open up in the U.S., or more plants open up in South America, this is what we're facing. And there is no way around this, and it's not unique to Northborough. This is happening across the entire country. This whole model of recycling, that, that basically, recycling pays for itself. So if you can pull a, a ton of recycling out of your trash stream, it doesn't cost you anything to get rid of, because the people who would take it would market it and make enough money to pay for it. So it was a win all around. That model's been turned upside down right now. So in order for us, and we're at the end of our hauling contract, which expires at the end of fiscal nineteen. So we're currently out to bid. We've separated the recycling out, and we are bidding that directly. Uh, we're trying to get a contract directly with the recycling company that sorts it and markets it, and we're going to have to bounce around for a little while with whatever the commodities market is doing. Again, this, the world is becoming a more complex place, and we have been, just think about this. Our, our waste and recycling contract has been locked pretty much in place for eight years. In those eight years, we were successful in negotiating a four percent increase in total over eight years, mostly gasoline, right? We're looking at a fifteen percent increase, uh, in the contract this year alone. And unless you want to get out of the trash and the recycling business altogether, which is an option, we're not required to provide this service, we need to come up with two hundred thousand dollars of additional subsidy to keep that program operating and solvent. So hopefully, again, as the markets come back around, that may, uh, may get a little bit better down the line, but right now, that's what we're looking at for fiscal, uh, fiscal twenty. The other one is retirement assessment. So we talked about unfunded pension liabilities. We have no control over this, so we participate in the Worcester Regional Retirement System. They send us our assessment, and we have to pay it. And the assessment is going up considerably, because they're on a funding schedule to deal with that unfunded liability by the year twenty thirty-five. Now, just so everybody understands something, the assessments for that, uh, Worcester Regional Retirement, we're paying for past sins. Any employee like me, who was hired nineteen ninety-seven or later, is actually self-funding their municipal pension, based on my contributions and the, it's a forced saving plan, which is very good. What we're paying for is, when they first started this pension system, they weren't putting any, enough money aside. And so what happened is, and the employees weren't being forced to contribute. So what happened was, we created this huge unfunded liability. So, you know, this is paying for past sins. I don't want anybody out there to go, "Oh, these municipal employees, they've got this great deal on the backs of the taxpayer. They're paying for all this." Yeah, you could say that, but blame it on the baby boomers, not my generation, because we're paying our own way. But it is a reality, and we have to pay it. So there's no way around that. Okay, now, after all that doom and gloom, I'm going to show you one shining, beautiful piece of great news, all right? Last year, we were facing a fifteen percent increase in health insurance. For the third consecutive year, we negotiated with all of the bargaining units. That means the teachers, the custodians, police, fire, DP, everybody. And we got them to agree to plan consolidation, and we bid it out, and that fifteen percent budget increase, uh, last year for fiscal nineteen, became a three point eight percent. The beauty of it is, this time around, because of doing that, we've got all of our risk pooled and consolidated. We can see our loss ratios. We've got more leverage in the negotiation with the carrier. We're only looking at a two percent. So that is absolutely, absolutely phenomenal. And just to drive that point home, this table shows what we used to see for, um, health increases. Average ten percent. Before fiscal twenty-ten, when we started actively negotiating and managing this. Look at this average. That's an eleven-year average in the health insurance budget, a little over three percent. I will put that up against anybody. And when you look at that, when you see the employees in this community around town, thank them for their willingness to work collaboratively with, uh, with the administration to make changes necessary to be able to bring this in at a reasonable level. That's a huge success story for us. And, but, but just so nobody, so everybody understands, fiscal seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, those three years, we spent about six months out of the year for each of those three years in negotiations with all of the employee groups. That means sharing information, running scenarios, bringing in, uh, outside consultants, because in order to make these changes, it's a huge information cost. Very few things are more personal than your health insurance, right? We had to convince all of these people that this is the right thing to do. And by the way, we didn't give them anything for it. These were basically increased co-pays, plan design changes, uh, things of that nature. We didn't give them anything back for that. That's the employees recognizing that this is a huge expense, and if we don't do something, it grinds the entire municipal operation to a halt. So just to put this in perspective, I showed you a slide. Three point five percent for general government is seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, right? If I get a ten percent increase on my five-point-eight million dollar health insurance, that's five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I don't have enough money for wage increases, I don't have enough money to, for anything at that point. So, uh, the, the basis, the whole point of this is, we have been actively managing this budget and actively managing this budget buster. And I know when we go to town meeting, that everything looks easy, and everybody's on the same page, and I hear the comments like, "Wow," you know, everything's, everything works out all the time. You don't need to worry. It doesn't, it's not elfin magic. It doesn't happen by pixie dust. Literally grinding it out six months out of the year to put this stuff together. Last year, we went to town meeting, uh, we still didn't have all of the contracts. Actually, two of the last three years, you guys sign the contracts or the memorandums of agreement with the unions night of town meeting, so we can walk in and say, "We've got a balanced budget." Okay? So, you know, when people say, I hear people say, "Oh, there's plenty of money," or, "Oh, this is easy." There's not, and it isn't, but it's because everybody works together that we make it look that way. My, my favorite, my favorite analogy is like water ballet. You know, above the surface, you see all this grace and beauty when we're doing this at town meeting. What you don't see is what happens below the water, all the thrashing and flailing to make that happen. That's what takes place six-plus months out of the year to make that happen. All right. You guys have all seen this before. This is our dashboard. These are the trend monitoring, uh, uh, indicators that we watch every year, and it's real easy color-coded for you. The green is favorable, uh, the black is marginal, and the red is, uh, is not good. So if you see here, we only have three in the red. One is state aid, which we talked about. The other is the pension liability. There is nothing for anybody in this room to do. Border Selectment Appropriations, there's nothing for you to do, there's nothing you can do. It's the municipal, it's the Worcester Regional Retirement System, based on a funding schedule, and, and they tell us what we have to pay. So we are on a funding schedule. The last one, unfavorable that you do control, is OPEB liability. And as you well know, we're putting a half a million dollars a year. This year, we're putting five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we've increased it a little bit to try to continue to make progress. But as of February of this year, we have three million dollars in our trust fund, and that doesn't include what we're planning to appropriate in fiscal twenty. So overall, when you look at this dashboard, you know, the things that we control and the things that we can manage, like this one right here, personal employee benefits, I list that as uncertain. When you look at the table, it's clearly been positive. But I list it as uncertain, because every fiscal year, I am uncertain. I am uncertain if we're going to be able to pull it off. Because a fifteen percent increase, like we were facing last year, will absolutely impact every single aspect of our municipal operation. And if we can't do something about it, um, we would be in trouble. In terms of the OPEB, I mentioned a moment ago, uh, we've got three million dollars. So this budget, this budget takes into consideration these long and, uh, long-range obligations, like unfunded liabilities. So we're putting in fiscal twenty-twenty, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards our OPEB liability. Three million in there now, that will go to three and a half million plus interest. Now, here's the magic of this. We have put two point five million dollars into that trust fund, but we have three million. That's the magic of interest. It's just like your retirement account. The more you put in, and the earlier you do it, the better off you are. So we're, we should be putting in at least twice, maybe three times this, if we were really, truly on a funding schedule, which is not realistic for us at the moment. It's just like when you're talking to somebody in their thirties, and you go, "Hey, how's your retirement looking?" They go, "Ah, I haven't quite gotten around to doing it, I really can't afford to do it." What would every financial advisor tell them? Put something aside now. It never gets easier, and it generates interest. Well, OPEB is sort of this sleeping bear that nobody was really watching or, or aware of. And the Government Accounting Standards Board made us all start measuring it in fiscal two thousand and nine and reporting it. Well, why do you measure and report something? Draw attention to it. Got your attention, they got your attention, and what do we do? We had a discussion about, how do we fix this? So we adopted the hotel and meals tax, generated another half a million dollars in revenue that wasn't on taxes, and we started putting that aside for OPEB. That's been a great plan for us. We're just trying to kick it up, you know, each year, we should be trying to increase that a little bit, if we're being honest about what we should be setting aside. The other long-term thing, the easiest thing to put off, is taking care of your equipment, your buildings, and your infrastructure. We have a one point one million dollar pavement management plan, and we've patched this together between state chapter ninety funds, half a million dollars. Inside the operating budget, the base budget, uh, which is included here tonight, is three hundred thousand dollars, same as last year and multiple years prior. But that's within the public works budget. And then, and the capital budget, which I'm going to give you a presentation on at your next meeting, again, this year, there's three hundred thousand dollars in there, and to get to that magic number of one point one million dollars. And we know, if we can at least do that, our roads will be maintained and improved slightly. So we've been putting one point one million dollars in, is this year four? Year four. One point one million dollars for four years straight. Overall pavement condition index, uh, or, what is it now, Scott?
Roadway surface rating.
Roadway surface rating. We changed, we changed consultants, and so nobody can call it the same thing, so. But the index, it's a scale of one to a hundred. Hundred's perfect, zero is you're walking on a lawn, right? So our overall rating was a seventy-one, and we were headed on a downward trajectory. Our overall rating now is a little over a seventy-three, and so we're heading in the right direction. Again, not as fast as we want to be heading, right? We all would like to be on a, a steeper curve, but the bottom line is, if we just keep doing what we're doing, we'll improve over time. We won't create a huge unfunded liability. So within the whole budget, including the capital, we're going to invest and take care of our roadways as well. Let's get to the slide that everybody was quaking about when I talked about the high school assessment and the, uh, use of the unfunded, uh, use of the levy capacity. When we met with you back in December, and we saw what was happening with the enrollment, we projected about a three hundred and sixty-one dollar increase in the average single-family home. Now, that enrollment and that high school assessment came in higher, but because the K to eight came in lower, and because the overall high school budget came in at a three percent instead of a three and a half, we are exactly what we showed you, and exactly where we are in terms of tax impact from back in December thirteenth at our meeting. This also includes, this projection includes and assumes that the average single-family home is going to increase in value by three percent. So we've created that inflationary, uh, piece in there, and this is where we are. Now, the disclaimer, as I always say at town meeting, is if something happens, if those values go up or down more than three percent, then that will impact that number. But right now, that's a pretty solid, um, estimate of where we think the taxes, or the tax impact's going to be in fiscal twenty. Now, keep in mind, uh, in order for us, and just a typical year, in order for us to, uh, survive, and for me to maintain services, and for the schools to maintain services, we need about a two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy dollar increase in the average single-family home tax bill, in order for us to maintain services, which typically translates to about a three and a half percent overall budget increase. So that's what that is with the high school assessment locked on. There's about eighty dollars or more, uh, uh, of additional, uh, cost in there right now because of that high school assessment doing what it's doing. So it is what it is, and we just want to be upfront and clear about what this, what this looks like. So everybody's excited now, you see the slide title conclusion? I know, I don't take it personally. Listen, this is great stuff. And, you know, I'm, I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud to present this stuff to you, because everything that we've done has been well thought out. You know, we haven't lurched around, we haven't had knee-jerk reaction. We have never made you or the appropriations committee make a decision in a financial crisis, ever. In ten years, ever. As long as I've been your administrator, anyway. As long as I've been your administrator, you know, in the last ten, eleven years. We've never done that, because we, we, we do everything we can to look out, to look back, to look forward. We do everything we can to identify issues and problems in enough time for us to try to find a meaningful solution, like health insurance, okay? Six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars was the budget gap last year, because of health insurance. I don't think, I don't think hardly anybody at town meeting ever even knew that. Why? Because we identified it nine months in advance. We spent six months negotiating with the unions, and we put that package together, so that we all walked into town meeting saying, "We've got a balanced budget with a reasonable tax increase." And everybody worked together to bring that. That's the employees, the schools, the general government departments, everybody works together. That's how this, that's how we've been this successful. But this fiscal twenty budget lives within the confines of two and a half, with the qualifier that we are using excess levy capacity as needed to maintain the current level of services. We support all the core missions, no department is being gutted, there's no radical reduction in the level of services that you're going to hear from any of the departments on the school side or the general government side. on the school side or the general government side. Can they all use more resources? Absolutely. Would they all like more staff? Absolutely. But will they tell you they can do their core mission just fine the way they're doing? Absolutely. We're not mortgaging our future to bring this budget to you tonight to meet the needs and the wants of what we have for our departments. We're taking care of these long-run solvency issues, we're funding OPEB, we're funding our retirement pension, and we are, there's nothing we can do about state aid, right? But we're dealing with the reality of state aid being a one percent increase for the last, you know, six years. We're investing in our equipment, and under capital budget, which again, I will present to you next, at your next meeting, we are on a clear replacement schedule. The police cruisers are replaced every five years, or every eight years, depending on whether they're frontline cruisers or administrators. The fire apparatus is replaced on a regular basis, the DPW equipment is replaced on a regular basis. We're not kicking that can down the road. And that's important because as I said to you at the beginning, I could easily bring you a zero tax increase budget this year. All I would do is not invest in infrastructure, not replace equipment, and not fund our unfunded liabilities. It's easy, it's not magic. But if you're going to do all these things, and you're going to make sure that the foundation upon which the budget is based is solid, you need to do all of those things, so. Last one, I'm, I'm being very confident in saying this to you, is that the tax increase that we've presented in this budget is the minimum tax increase that needs to come forward in order for us to maintain the current level of services. There's nothing wild in there, there's nothing new in there. This is a solid budget, it's a reasonable budget increase. It's a little bit more than maybe we'd all like to see, but the reason for that is a very reasonable one. And that is enrollment at the high school, which people would stop having babies, you know? And, you know, we'd be better, but it is what it is. So we have a little bubble of kids coming up through there, and we need to be able to responsibly manage that, that little bubble, which we're trying to do here. It is cyclical, Elaine, absolutely. Now, this slide is last year's, and it comes with a qualifier. Now, I'd love to stand here and tell you, this is the ninth consecutive year that we've got the GFWA Distinguished Budget Award. I'm pretty confident, in fact, I'd bet anybody here a cup of coffee, that we will get it. We just haven't received official notice. We submitted a little bit later because of other priorities, so I haven't gotten the official notice, but we should be getting it literally any day now, so. But everything that we put together in fiscal nineteen and everything we put together in fiscal twenty, as you know, follows national best practices. We get a lot of attention statewide for our budgeting and our fiscal planning, and I'm confident that we'll be there again, again this year, so. With that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, John. I have a question, what does this leave us for an unused capacity levy limit?
That's a great question. So we have about two point eight million dollars in excess levy capacity, and we're planning to use about nine hundred and nine thousand. So you'll have a little bit over like one point eight million left. Now, keep in mind, so several years ago, like when we, it's typical for us to dig into that levy capacity, like three, two hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand. But when we get more new growth, because we're conservative in our new growth numbers, we replenish that typically. So I can tell you right now, we're assuming thirty million dollars in new growth, right? New tax value coming online. Right now, down on Bartlett Street, we've got a million square feet of industrial space that's being built or is in the permitting pipeline. So I'm pretty confident that I'm going to get more than thirty million dollars in new growth, but I don't count that until it's here. Because if something happens to the economy, and all of a sudden, boom, somebody decides, you know what? That warehouse that's been planned, and they might have even paid the building permit for, they may decide just not to move forward with that. So we, we always are conservative, we count it when it's here. And so because of that, I see us, I don't, at the end of the fiscal year, when we see what our new growth really is, I don't think we'll use up nine hundred thousand. But we're going to, we're not going to replenish all that, that I'm sure of. And so what we'll do back, we meet in December of next year, Dawn, we will take the new information, and we will schedule out over five years to see how that looks, you know, before we're up against the wall. But it's, it's a bite, it's a bite this year, and it's a significant bite, so.
Thank you.
Questions?
First of all, John, thank you very much. The way you present, you make it look easy, but I know it's not. I know it's a lot of work on your part and your staff, and Kim and Jason, it's, so much work goes into this. By the time you've got this culminating presentation, it's all smooth and laid out for everybody, but I want to thank you for all your work in putting this together. I have a couple of questions, one I think is quick. You said that you anticipate the assessment changing, maybe twenty twenty-three. Is that based on NESDEC projections? Is that what they're basically telling us as far as enrollment?
Jason's been picking around at those.
Okay.
It's the school's current enrollment. What we've done is we've taken their current enrollment and just rolled it forward and looked at it like that.
Okay.
So it's no projections or anything like that.
We're looking at the.
Existing kids in the schools.
Right.
Okay.
Assuming they all move up and still move out of town.
Yes, okay.
So you can see where the kids are in the contributing grades leading up to it. And for whatever reason, a higher percentage of Northborough kids leave the middle school, go to high school, where a lesser number of the Southborough kids, when they leave their middle school, I think a lot of them go to private school. You know, when the economy was really bad and the recession hit, it actually helped out Northborough because those kids that were in private schools suddenly started showing up at Algonquin. And that shift in enrollment meant our assessment at the high school during the recession was actually quite low and manageable, which helped us out. Southborough's, on the other hand, was, was high, so.
Okay. The other question I had right now is, first of all, could you explain a little bit more about the facilities manager position? You did, and it has come up before, this is definitely nothing new, but if you could explain a little bit more detail what that person would do?
Sure, so I'll give you a perfect example. The CPC at town meeting approved a project. We don't have the ability to plan, like our capital plan is six years out. So I know when big projects are coming, and I try to budget my time and staff time to manage those. But we get grants, the CPC approved a project for the, as I said, for the library. Well, that project just showed up at the doorstep. Now, I have got a library director who's enthusiastic about fixing his building, but he doesn't know anything about public procurement, prevailing wages, how to hire an architect, how to negotiate a contract, and how to do contract administration once you hire a contractor. So who does all that stuff right now? Anybody want to guess?
The facilities manager does that.
And Kim. So I'll give you another perfect example. On, I won't say on a whim, but based on the circumstances, we made a decision to acquire White Cliffs, right? You either acquire it, or it's going to be torn down. No time for analysis, which you know I love, no time for a data-driven review, which is how I operate, no. You had to make an emotional commitment to that building. It's fabric of the community, we want to save it, or we're going to allow it to be torn down, that's it. Well, that thing drops into my office. Well, I had already had a fire station building project, labor negotiations, a classification compensation going, and a strategic IT plan and a website upgrade already on my plate, which is about two projects more than I should have to begin with. Now, this thing falls out of the sky. Okay, so we form a committee, everybody gets together, all right? We meet, what do you need to do? You need to hire an architect, you need to hire consultants, to do what? What are you going to task them with doing, right? We talk, we talk. Okay, so who spent three to four weeks contacting other communities, finding scopes of services, talking to every architect that they know, trying to come up with a scope of services, and then try to figure out how much that scope of services might cost and how we can possibly afford it under the limited budget that we went to town meeting for, right? So when people say, oh, nothing happened, you know, we acquired it and nothing happened, all that has to happen behind the scenes. And you know who did all that? It's Kim and me. So our office is overloaded with everything from that type of stuff, front of the building, you know? I had done, and I had an architect, we designed it, they got up there, the masons pulled the front off, and they said, oh, you got some structural issues in the back. Well, now you have a whole nother project, right? The basement flooded, the generator died, Kim spent, how many weeks did you spend on that, Kim? Four or five weeks, dealing with contractors, specing out a new generator for the building, getting it installed, doing that contract administration, these are all things that a facilities manager would do. We have, we have sixty million dollars in capital assets. We've got at least, you know, fifteen or twenty million dollars of buildings, right? I have one custodian, not even a top mop, not even, not even somebody who does a little bit of facilities maintenance. He's a straight-up custodian, shared between two buildings. Other than that, it's my office that handles all this stuff. So when the police station puts a roof on, who do they call? They call us to put the specs together, you know? When I'm hiring an architect for the fire station, that's here. Right now, I need to be hiring an owner's project manager for that fire station project, right now, in order to keep our schedule. I'm two weeks behind on that. These are all things that a facilities manager would do. Now, that's big projects. On a day-to-day basis, the fire chief, well, actually, I'll use the senior center director and the library director as an example. Senior center director, Kelly Burke, you all know her, she is a phenomenal senior center director. She's in a fourteen thousand square foot building with a geothermal system that looks like the inside of a nuclear sub, okay? When the light starts flashing and something's wrong, can we reasonably expect her to be the one to manage that? No, so who does she call? Me and Kim. And so what we do then is we try to get a contractor in, somebody who can look at this and advise us. These are all things, you know, I don't like, you know this, I'm a planner, okay? Everything that I bring forward to you, budgets, everything is planned, right? Facilities management, we're reactive. And it's always something happens, like the front of the building or the generator, it's unexpected. And I have, there are things that my time should be spent on. And when some of these things come up, I get pulled away and Kim gets pulled away. And we spend our time on things that arguably aren't appropriate for us at our place in the organization. We've always done it, and we've done it well, but right now, we just have too many things stacked up. And what I don't like, I don't like feeling like I'm not getting to everything that I'm supposed to be getting. So we've worked the last, and I don't want anybody to feel bad for us, but we've, the last three weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, to get this stuff done, but also to get the White Cliffs stuff done and to get the fire station stuff done, and get the front of the building done, we need, we need help. We're one of the few communities our size that doesn't have a facilities manager. The other thing is, we're always grabbing stuff, right? We're great at grabbing grants, and we're great at getting ourselves into new initiatives. What's the last thing we just approved?
Community.
Green communities, right? We got a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of grant funds that we got, it's sitting there, and we just have to apply for it. Well, that deadline was February second. Kim had to drop the class comp study and negotiations to make sure we didn't miss that deadline. Now, we're going to get those grants, right? Hundred and forty-five thousand for a couple of projects. Who's going to do those projects? Who's going to oversee them? Who's going to deal with the contractors? Who's going to, this is just where we are. Again, you know, it's all good, we're victims of our own success, okay? If we were mismanaged and we didn't have any money, we wouldn't have any projects. But we're well managed, and we have money, and we've budgeted it well. We need help managing the projects, though, if we're going to keep that cycle going. So that's my passionate plea for a facilities manager. It's long overdue, and like I said, we prioritize public safety, and we prioritize the departments that took reductions in staffing willingly during the recession to get by. So we took care of those things first. But in terms of what's left, and I told the fire chief, you know, there's a deputy chief position, to his credit, he said, John, you need the facilities manager more than I need a deputy chief right now. And that's the kind of cooperation I appreciate, because he could easily be standing here saying, no, 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 that was in the study, I really need to have that, and I hate to have it now. We can't fit it. I can't even fit the facilities manager, but I got to get a toehold in there if things are going to get better and improve, so. Very long answer to what seemed like a simple question.
Well, no, no, no.
But I appreciate.
I think it's important for everyone to hear that, and also to hear how it might offload you a little bit because I know that there are so many things going on right now. And it's important to hear how that person would, you know, be part of your responsibility area.
Even the police chief said to me the other day, you know, he needs some help getting a whole handle on his facility, you know? That's kind of the backlog, you have the special projects, then you got the emergency projects, but then you have the preventative stuff, you know? It's like you want to get out ahead of these things. You know, everybody's negotiating their own contracts for boiler maintenance. There should be one contract, you know, get economies of scale, you know, things of that nature. So once a person gets in, they get through a little bit of a backlog, the idea is to get ourselves out ahead of the curb with preventative maintenance and, you know, start to take care of things before they break, rather than coming forward after they've broken, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yes, and I think it's going to really turn out to be a relatively small component of our budget, but I just wanted to ask about a little clarification on our debt service in the operational budget. I saw from the slide, I think that it's down to four percent.
Yes.
Which actually sounds like it might be lower than one would normally expect in a municipal budget, but could you please provide the detail behind that?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we've done is we manage ourselves very well in terms of our debt position. So our policy, again, our rules of engagement, say debt should be between five and ten percent of the operating budget. Now, typically, if you fall below five percent, normally what that is, is a red flag. What does it mean? You're not fixing your equipment, you're not investing in your facilities, right? You're kicking the can. In our case, in fiscal, in two thousand and ten, fiscal twelve, we adopted a free cash policy, and we have a funding source for much of this capital, and it's a pay-as-you-go. So in fiscal, in fiscal twenty, we will have done fourteen million dollars in pay-as-you-go capital since two thousand and ten. About ten point five million of that is just free cash. And so that's how we've gotten our debt service down. So here's the thing, our next big project that is on the horizon is a fire station, right? And one of the things that we need to communicate, you need to communicate as policy boards and committees is, when you stand up there and you say, you know, we need to build this station, the need is here, and you explain all that, right? People will say, well, we can't afford it. Our job is to make the distinction between what somebody can't afford personally and what we can afford as a corporate entity. As a corporate entity, our debt is very low. We have planned for these large acquisitions, and we've created capacity in our level of indebtedness to take on that new debt, okay? If you truly cannot afford the increase as a personal, as an individual, there are programs that we have available and abatements and things of that nature. But we have to manage ourselves as a corporate entity. And as a corporate entity, we, we need to do these projects. And if I was sitting here, and I, and our debt, our debt service, so this is principal and interest that we'd be paying, if our debt service was ten or twelve or fifteen percent, that'd be a different conversation. You'd be, you'd be pretty much well in debt. And so I always liken it, like, again, in your personal life, for us, we have, you know, if this were an individual, we'd have a mortgage on our house, maybe a car payment, and that's it. When anything breaks, the washer and dryer breaks, the furnace needs to, we're paying cash for all that stuff. That's a good place, a good place to be, and it's based on the discipline that we've had over the last ten years, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so, thank you, this was very comprehensive and obviously thoughtful and a lot of work. I, I know you've been here many weekends with staff, so really, we're very grateful for that. So the facilities manager, the facilities manager that you spoke about. You know, this is new for me, this is the first time I've heard it. So if you wouldn't mind, you mentioned a figure of fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Is that January to June, or?
Yes.
So.
It's a classified position, and the range, I forget the starting range, but it goes up to, it goes up to ninety-eight or ninety-nine thousand dollars, is the range for that position.
Okay, and they are responsible just for buildings, or for parks and sidewalks, or just buildings?
No, it would, it's primarily facilities, so buildings. No. It would, it's primarily facilities, so buildings. Um, parks is responsibility of DPW, sidewalks, DPW, I'm sensing where the next question's gonna go. Roadways is DPW. Uh, this is, uh, this is buildings.
Okay.
Strictly, strictly facilities.
Okay. And, um, so would that person be able to apply for grants?
Yes. Well, one of the things that I would task this individual is, is I'd put them in charge of the Green Communities program. So this first round, because we qualified, right? We have an allocation of about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of grant funds that we more or less just have to apply for and there, we, we will get. You do need to do the projects, right? When you move past that first round, there are hundreds of thousands, excuse me, of, of dollars of grant, competitive grant funds that are out there. And one of the things that I would task this individual with is, they're in charge of this twenty percent energy reduction plan that we had to put together to become a green community under the state program. Well, they need to find other projects under there and apply for these grants. So, you know, in part, I like, just the Green Communities program alone, I think will, will pay for this position. Um, so, uh, but without a doubt, uh, you know, i- if you don't apply for the grant, you're not gonna get them.
Oh, right.
And we get grants. We do. We get a lot of grants. Um, but you have to apply and then when you get the money, you have to actually manage the projects. And that's where we break down here. We're great at organizing, we're great at getting the stuff in, but then we have a backlog of these projects that somebody has to do and there's nobody to pitch any of that to.
That's, that's great. So, and then I have, I don't know if this is the time to ask this question, but at the end of the warrant, you, you further broke down the budget?
Yes.
And there were a couple of items that, um, kind of jump out with the change in amounts. Like, under advisory boards, personnel board?
Yep.
Could you, would you mind explaining?
Sure. The personnel board is the central account that I spoke about earlier. So, uh, the contracts, all the con, labor contracts are in negotiations. So the, the wage increases aren't reflected in the budget. They're all budgeted centrally. As well as the class compensation study that we're doing, all the impacts are budgeted centrally in that personnel board account. When the contracts get settled, then those funds would be transferred out to the individual budgets.
Oh, okay. All right. And what about under special warrant articles, other financing uses? What is, what would that amount be?
That's the solid waste subsidy that we talked about.
Oh, 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 okay.
So, we need, so the, the solid waste program is, is an enterprise fund, which means we isolate the fees that come in. When people buy bags, they pay for the bags.
Right, right.
They isolate those fees that come in.
Uh-huh.
But those fees don't pay for the whole program. It's also subsidized by tax dollars and, and that's the line where that comes in.
And one more, reserve for abatements.
Reserve for abatements is, uh, uh, an account that sets aside so that, um, say Wegmans comes in or the mall comes in and they say, our taxes are too high, so they file an abatement. Well, there's a whole process and you can wind up in, in, uh, in, basically in court with them. And if they win, then you have to give them an abatement. You have to reduce their taxes. So, uh, we have a principal assessor that's very good and we generally don't have a lot of abatements and we don't have a lot of big abatements. However, if you remember from the tax classification hearing, our fifteen top taxpayers, if one of them files for an abatement, and several of them do as a matter of course every year, if they're successful, it could be a two or three hundred thousand dollar abatement. So you have to plan for that, uh, for them. When we get through, so we hold that money aside and the, the rule of thumb is it's about one point two percent of the levy and that's where that six hundred thousand dollar figure roughly is.
Right.
Right? So, one point two to one point four is what the state wants you to hold aside. Now, the beauty of it is, so the beauty of it is, when we set the tax rate in November, we know where we are in our abatements and so we are, we, we are able to drop that number down to minimize, to reduce the tax impact. That's one of the ways we are able to manage the overall tax impact. But on the front end of the budget, you have to have that set aside.
So, so every year, it's this, it's this larger increase?
It starts out at a one, is it one point two or one point four?
It's at one point one, actually.
I'm off by a point. It's one point one of the levy, according to Jason. It was one point two last year, was it not? Please just say yes, so I don't look foolish. Okay, so it was one point two. Look, I pride myself on having a really good handle on these numbers and where things are moving. Um, but you have to have that because we have, we have, thankfully, we've got some very large taxpayers, like two million dollar tax bill. So if they're successful in getting even a little bit knocked off, and the other thing, too, is when it comes to things like malls, right, or these large R and D facilities, there aren't a lot of comps, you know what I mean? Like, I can pretty much figure out what any of your houses are worth or what my house, because there's a lot of similar houses. Well, how many, you know, how many malls are there in this area? How many, how many R and D facilities are there in this area, biotech? So it gets more complicated and so we, we do an excellent job, but, you know, we have to, we have to on the front end be prepared and hold that reserve for abatement. Um, the beauty of it is, if we don't need it and we know if we don't need it when we set the tax rate, is we just drop it down and it reduces the tax, uh, the tax bill for us at that point in time.
Okay.
So. I know we didn't probably, uh, spend too much time focused on that in November, but that's one of the ways, if you go back and look at the presentation, that is the primary way we're able to push the tax impact down at that, at that point in time, 'cause we know where we are. The risk is gone.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Any more questions? I love them.
Let me think. Thank you, John.
No, you got one more.
Tim, I'm sorry.
I'd have a, a general comment about the, um, the facilities manager. Um, it sounds like once we hire a facilities manager, we'll get an expert in the area of facilities, um, that A, will add another resource to the community, to the staff, but also more importantly, free up your time and Kim's time to focus on the areas where you guys add the most value to the community. So even though it's an additional budget add for the new person coming in, ultimately, it's a, it's a significant value add to the community because we get an expert in the facilities area and that frees up your time and Kim's time to really focus on the areas where you guys can add the most value to the community and you're not spending weeks and weeks trying to find generators and, and not that that's not a, a value add to the community, but it's, maybe that's not the strengths of, of where you guys should be spending your time. So, even though, you know, you mentioned the, the cost for the facilities manager and sometimes those dollars seem large, um, it's really not when you consider the, the overall impact that that one single person will have on not only the community, but on you, your, your office's time to, to free you up to focus on areas where you, you maximize your, your abilities and, and your value add to the community.
I appreciate those comments and, and they're absolutely true. Um, those of you that have worked with me for a decade or more, you know I pride myself on being responsive and being on top of everything. And I will tell you, the facilities piece has grown significantly in the last couple of years to the point where, uh, you know, I feel like we're not on top of things. And I did not wanna propose this, uh, because we agreed that the public safety positions were gonna be the priority and we filled all of, we filled those after a thorough study. Um, and this position, you know, this, this needs to happen. Um, and, uh, and again, I think it'll pay for, it'll pay for itself. Uh, I, I just wanna, I'm just gonna put a flag right now and warn you, right? When you, uh, when we hire someone and we look at like, uh, a, a good example would be our pavement management plan, they're not gonna come in and say, everything's fine, you don't need to do anything. You know, when this person comes in, they're gonna identify needs that are gonna have budgetary impacts. But like most capital things, you know, if someone came into your house and said, hey, Jason, I know you're saving money for retirement and you're going out to dinner, but your furnace hasn't been serviced in three years. It's either gonna die or burst into flames. They're gonna identify things that are gonna cost you money. But in the long run, they'll save you money 'cause that furnace won't fall apart. It'll last you. So that's the, that's the rub. But this position is, there's no way this position can't be included, honestly, without having things starting to break down, so.
Just a piece of history, actually. Um, this position was proposed and I think actually, um, classified before John even came to the town in Northborough, so this has been ongoing for a long time. So, so anyway.
Good, chair. Yeah, I'd just like to add one final comment. I just wanna thank you, John, Kim, Jason.
Steal my thunder.
The department heads, the school, uh, school administration and school committees. Um, I described this budget thing each year, I think I call it a thousand-piece jigsaw puzzle. And you got some pieces that fell on the floor over here and the dog ate a couple and you're never sure how you're gonna put this puzzle together. These last several years, we've had challenges, particularly in the healthcare side of things. And one way or another, you guys have always managed to come through and, and get that put together for town meeting. This year, it's the high school assessment that really is the, the wrench in the works, but you still managed with the cooperation of the department heads and the administrations to, uh, bring it together at an affordable level and keep us going for yet another year without losing sight of the long-term objectives that we're still trying to address as well. So I just wanna say thanks for that and I appreciate all the hard work.
And this is a joint, uh, public hearing with appropriations, so I don't know if appropriations had any questions?
All we did hearing is whatever.
All right. That, that being said, do you wanna close your meeting?
Well, it is a, it is a public hearing, so I don't know if there's any questions from the public.
It is a public hearing. Okay, public, oh.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Do I understand that, that project manager is a six-month position?
No. Uh, it's a, it's a facilities manager. Um, it's a permanent position. Sometimes when you can't fit something, I can't fit it for the whole year, so I budget it to start mid-year. What, what'll happen, and you all know this, what'll happen is next year, I have to come up with the other half so I can finance it for the whole year. When things are tight, that's what you do. The last dispatcher we added, we added mid-year and now this year, we've picked up the full salary so that we can carry it forward. It's a, it's a compromise. I'd need the position today, but I'd rather have it six months from today than not have it at all.
Right, okay.
So, does that make sense? And if I may, uh, also just, I, I would like to recognize, uh, Jason Little, who is our new finance director, um, and, uh, Kim, uh, Kim Foster, who is the assistant town administrator. These are the two people that have been here for the last several weekends with me getting this done. And I wanna put a special plug in for them because we are down, our finance director retired. Jason was just promoted to finance director. So, there's only four people in this organization that do that four-hundred-page budget and all those explanations and everything, and we're down to three people. So in addition to this workload that we have and all the extra projects, we're down twenty-five percent of our team, but we still managed to get it all done. And it's because these two stepped up and they, they did everything that needed to be done to get us here tonight. So I just wanna acknowledge and appreciate them.
Yes.
Uh, the Worcester's retirement budget, year after year after year, does anybody watch that? And when, when is that gonna go away? Everybody dies or what?
You make me sound ghoulish when I, when you say stuff like that. It's like, if everybody would die, this, you know, unfunded liability would just go away. Um, it's, uh, it, we do watch it every year, uh, um, and, uh, it's regulated by the state. It's, it's watched by every member community, has a say in the operation and they have an annual meeting. But the, the bottom line is that unfunded liability was, was significant. And, uh, in order to deal with it, when does it go away, is in twenty thirty-five. So that unfunded, I think we're at forty-one percent funded right now, the, the pension system, uh, Northborough's share of it. Uh, because now it's done as an actuarial basis now. It's not, it used to just be the overall pension and they just kinda carve it up based on how big you are, how much roughly your share of it was. Now it's done by your individual employees. We know exactly what our unfunded liability is. But it's on a schedule to be fully funded in twenty thirty-five. Before anybody gets too excited, 'cause I would love to see that brought down. By law, we have to be funded by twenty forty, so we've shaped, we've, they've pushed that back to twenty thirty-five. But I'm looking at a fourteen percent increase on that schedule. Can you imagine if, if accelerated schedule, what that would look like? Uh, so they're trying to balance everything out, get on a funding schedule. It's kinda like OPEB or your personal retirement. The key is to be on a schedule and know where you are. If you're gonna postpone something and you're not gonna fund it, uh, to its full amount, you at least need to know what that is and what the repercussions are of not funding it. Um, but in the case of the Worcester Regional Retirement, this, this, we have kind of a, a voice, one small voice in that system. Um, but it's the retirement system and the elected board that manages it.
It's good enough to do our pension in our town.
Well, it is, this is our pension in our town.
It is our pension.
But we participate in the Worcester Regional Retirement System, so they're the ones that manage it. And that's because they're pooling all the resources of all the member towns and investing it and this economy is a scale in terms of the people who manage it, uh, and the overhead is, is less. So, um, that's where you wanna be. You wanna be pooled with very, very, uh, excellent management of that, uh, of that system. And they've done well. They've done, actually, the, the, the retirement system's done very well, so. Again, it's the old sins that we're paying for.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
So we'd like to make a motion to adjourn. So, a little second, any discussion? Follow some data?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you for your hospitality.
Okay. Past the hour of eight P M., Kathy Dubert, town planner, John Campbell, community preservation committee chair.
Thank you.
Presentation on the CPC town meeting warrant articles and presentation on zoning town meeting warrant articles. Kathy?
Good evening. I was, oh, I was gonna say, and John is, um,
Right on, Kim.
Coming, coming from an open space committee.
Waiting in the wings, so to speak.
Um, so whether, whether you wanna do zoning or, um, CPC?
CPC first.
Okay.
Oh, John?
Good evening. Thanks for having me back. Pleasure to be here again. Talked about my passion for CPA articles. Um, only a total of six this year. And, um, I'm gonna go through what we, what we've done, but just a general reminder that, um, the CPA in town requires that we allocate ten percent of the funds we get each year toward historical preservation, ten percent toward open space and recreation, ten percent towards affordable housing. And once we've met those minimums, the remainder can be assigned across, uh, projects in any of those areas or they may cross over more than one area. Um, this year, we started with a reserve in what we call the unreserved account of about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Those are, uh, funds from previous years that we had not yet allocated to a given project. And by keeping it in the unreserved fund, we have the flexibility each year to assign it toward a certain area, rather than committing it to one of the three core areas, which have their own unique funds under CPA. Uh, the committee has started to adopt that policy so that we have the most flexibility year over year. Um, we anticipate about five hundred and sixty thousand in new revenue for fiscal twenty twenty. And that includes the state, uh, the town's property tax surcharge as well as the state match. The state match, as you may have read, has been going down in recent years, primarily because so many communities are adopting it, including Boston now, and also because the original source for those funds, uh, only has so much in it and is really not kept up with the growth of CPA. So, good news is there's legislation pending with a, a lot of broad support among our own local legislators and, and others to increase the surcharge on the state deed fee, which would in turn, um, put more money in the pot for CPA to distribute to the various communities. So we're hopeful that the match will increase in coming years. But it's important to remember that over the course of the CPA in Northborough, we've gotten over two point two million in matching funds from the state that we would not have gotten otherwise. So, very successful program overall, I think. Um, and one thing I'm gonna talk about at town meeting a little bit this year is the diversity that we've been able to achieve in spreading those funds over the core areas. And this year is, is no exception. So specifically in the articles that we have this year, um, one thing we do need to do is pay our bills first. So, the biggest chunk is going, or one of the biggest chunks is going toward the debt service on White Cliffs. I overheard John mentioning it a little bit in his previous presentation. And this is the second year of debt service towards the payment for White Cliffs that we approved at town meeting in twenty sixteen. And I know, if you're like me, you drive by and you're wondering, when, you know, are we going to do something about it? But, uh, it's a long process. For those who didn't know, it took over a year and a half to go through the remediation of the land that the seller took care of. The property finally closed. Um, and, uh, I think the, uh, White Cliffs Committee has, uh, joyously reported that they now have a consultant on board and they'll begin the process of assessing the property, uh, getting it to a point where it could be thought about for reuse. So, slow process, but progress is being made. And I think that most of us will see the results soon. So that's two hundred and So that's $239,000 and is a large portion of what we had this year. That more than satisfies the 10% historical category requirement, obviously. But we do have two other small historic resource projects. And they involve marker signs adding to other places in town where you have a description of a historic resource. And I find these to be really interesting. If you walk around town or you drive by, there's one at the Aqueduct Bridge and at the old mill site on Whitney Street and so on. So they're very interesting, I think, if you walk or go into any of these places. The first two, the first application was for two sign updates at the Howard Street and the Brigham Street Barrow Grounds in town. And that was an $8,000 project for the purchase and installation, production and installation of the signs. The other project is two more historic markers. One is at the 3739 Main Street, former Gale Country Store, General Store site, which has now been made into an affordable housing unit, I'm going to mention in a minute. And the other will be at the old bridge site, which is now a renovated bridge site, where Cold Harbor crosses under Church Street. So I think good use of the remaining historical category funds that we had. Any questions on any of those before I go on? Very well. The next big project is in the open space recreation category. And that's for Phase Two of the field lighting improvement at the Melican Middle School. And that's the field and back that is used extensively for youth football, also softball. And they had a light fall down, if you may recall. So last year's town meeting, we approved Phase One, which was the initial engineering and procurement of the hardware. Phase Two, which is $290,000, will complete the project, putting all-new lighting around that field. It'll be obviously safer, higher efficiency, more concentrated lighting. So I really think in the end, it's probably going to be a better look even for the surrounding homes. And it will give greater utility to the fields for, you know, more of the season. So, good project. That came up rather quickly. To use your analogy, there was no pre-planning or forethought to that one because the lights fell down and we mainly had to address a safety issue. It was nice that we had the reserves in our unreserved fund and we didn't have to tax our incoming revenue with the other things that we had to do. So, glad to complete that project. And that should be done, I think, we're thinking at the end, by next, this coming fall, isn't that right? So they can use it for this year's football season. Finally, the third major category that we have to account for, and we enjoy doing so, is affordable housing in the town. And this year, the committee elected to recommend another amount of $150,000 that would be granted to the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. And the partnership with the NAHC has been very successful for the last few years in town. By the CPC grants money, town votes on it if approved. It goes toward their use of the funds. However, the town controls the funds until they're needed. And so essentially, the NAHC calls for them as needed and they pay down that amount of grant that they got in each given year. They've been very successful using it on projects in town that are quite visible. It started with the major program of four senior affordable housing units that were created right nearby here in town. And the next very successful project that has just been completed is the two buildings next to the Trinity Church, that's called 3739 Main, have both been converted into affordable homes. Beautiful project. And they leveraged their funds with Habitat for Humanity so that they really got twice the bang out of what the project needed. And that's really a good example of what NAHC has done for affordable housing in town. I don't think it could have worked quite well without a partnership of another organization. And the committed volunteers there have done an excellent job. Can't say enough about it. So with the other projects they see on the horizon, the potential to either acquire or develop a couple of more sites in town, we felt this was a very worthwhile place to spend the money. So with that, we will allocate, oh, I'm sorry. The last article is the housekeeping of the administration fund that we utilize each year for studies, appraisals and things like that, as allowed by law. So we typically recommend nearly the max that were allowed, 5% of the annual expected CPA revenue. And so $25,000 is requested there for the admin fund. And so in total, we're recommending $718,000 in CPA allocations, which against our incoming expected revenue. And the unreserved fund, we had about 1.3 million plus to work with. So it's going to leave us with a considerable reserve still in the unreserved fund, which is the way we like it. And on top of that, if I'm not mistaken, when the town common project is completed, we will receive our grant money. That's going to go back into our resources for a future year. $200,000?
Yep, the end of this fiscal year.
Right, perfect. So, thank you for giving me the time to explain that. Are there any questions?
State match, what is the percentage now?
It's expected 15% in this upcoming fiscal year.
15?
It started at 100. I think on average, if you were to do it that way, it's around 30 to 40 over the history of CPA.
It's unfortunate, the city of Boston chose to participate.
Very unfortunate. But overdue.
Right. John, could you just mention, there's a minimum allocation that has to go to each of the three?
Right.
And the percentage is what for that?
10% minimum to those three core areas.
Okay. So then 70% can be retained undesignated?
It could be.
And allocated?
Technically.
Yes, okay, right, yeah. As much as 70% could retain, not necessarily be categorized?
Correct.
Or dedicated to any particular one? And you have the flexibility to direct those dollars to whatever project presents itself?
Toward that question, in the earliest years of CPA, when we had really no idea what we were doing, we just thought we were supposed to stock the funds. The way the dollars work in each community is you establish four funds in your town's finance. The affordable housing, the open space, historic, and then unreserved. And so we were, you know, putting money in, we're going to save this for the future open space project and the future historic project. Well, in fact, we used a good chunk of the open space money for the Green Street property acquisition, which was one of our major land acquisitions. And in fact, we used the big balance of the historic resource fund for the White Cliffs purchase. But as we got a little smarter in the recent years, we started realizing that rather than necessarily committing it, even though the historic advocates may come and say, we got another building that we want to save. And we might say, well, okay, wait a minute, put the brakes on, something else might come up. So that way, we can always put it to whatever cause seems the most deserving that year.
Leslie?
Yeah, first of all, these are very reasonable and I think they're great projects in this list. Although I really particularly like the signs that we'll have at Brigham and the Howard Street Burial Ground. I think the more signs like that that we have in town, the better because I think it promotes more walkability, which is what I think we're all looking for. I think to the point where if we have enough of these, people will actually say, hey, why don't we go walk downtown and read these plaques? So I think it's another reason to encourage that. And it just looks nice. It adds to the richness of the community, I think, as you drive by. People who don't live here drive through and I think they see that kind of thing and they see that we take a lot of pride in our community. And I think that really adds to that, so these are great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, John, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
So six is the magic number, because there's six CPC articles, six zoning articles. The first article, these are all, the six are being presented or promoted by the planning board. So the first article, oh, let me, excuse me, let me just back up and say that the planning board is in the middle of their public hearing for the zoning articles. They started at their March meeting and it'll be continued, or was continued to their April 9th meeting. So if anybody that's, you know, viewing this meeting or, you know, has, comes up with questions, you know, the public hearing has been continued and they can have an opportunity on April 9th at the planning board meeting. So the first article is the infamous, you know, housekeeping articles that we usually have one or two of those a year. This particular one relates to special permit, the special permit section of the zoning bylaw. And it literally, we're changing the word shall to the word may, which in, you know, probably any other circumstance other than zoning bylaw, you know, going from shall to may or may to shall is huge, as we all learned in, you know, fifth or sixth grade English. But in this particular case, one of our board members found this in our zoning bylaw where throughout the zoning bylaw and throughout the planning board rules and regulations, we use the word may when we talk about special permits. For whatever reason, shall was in this particular section and we're just changing it so that it's, you know, uniform across the zoning bylaw. The next article, which is Article 32, pertains to the Design Review Committee, which is all, falls under the Site Plan, a section of the zoning bylaw. This particular proposal is we're updating the membership. Where, it's still the same amount of board members, there's five members. They're appointed by the planning board as part of the site plan approval process. And probably the most dramatic change, I guess, is that the, in the past years, there hasn't been a term limit for these particular members. And we've actually been very fortunate that that committee has pretty much the original core of people and a very dedicated group of volunteers on that board. So we're changing it to, or proposing to change it, that every individual would have a three-year term limit, much like just about every other board in town. So we're actually, you know, bringing that into, you know, being consistent with the majority of terms on other boards. The third and fourth article are, both deal with the same subject matter, which has to do with the temporary outdoor sale of holiday trees, wreaths and similar horticultural products, which is a mouthful for town meeting floor. But the first article has to do with defining what that is. And the second article, as with all zoning, you have to, once you define something, you have to give it a home. So it's putting it in the use table. And this came about, it's something that you're not really, you're not going to notice. This is not putting, you know, a new onus on anyone that wants to sell Christmas trees or, you know, flowers for Mother's Day or Valentine's Day or something. We have those vendors in town, they're very temporary, they come, they go, and that's the extent of it. There's, you know, there's never really been an issue in the past. So we're not now saying that you have to get a permit, but we're defining that use so that in the event that there is a problem or someone overstays their welcome or they're, you know, set up in an inappropriate location, the building inspector will be able to go out and speak with them and talk to them. So it really started off as a new person, a new business owner wanted to put Christmas trees up this year. And Bob Frederico, our building inspector, who's now been, you know, with us, I think, a year and a half or so, but, you know, immediately went to the zoning to look up, you know, where do we place this? You know, is he in an appropriate location? You know, the zoning bylaw was silent on that, so we're adding that in. So again, it's not, you know, there's no fee associated with this. It's, again, you don't have to go through and get a permit, but this allows people to continue doing what they've always done. And then the fifth article, again, goes back to the special permit section in the zoning bylaw. In Northborough, which is not unique to Northborough, there's many towns that have both the zoning board and the planning board issue special permits, depending on what part of the zoning bylaw that you're in. But this particular section has to do with non-conforming uses, which is something that is regulated by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And so what we're doing is we're looking at it as if we're updating the language. And we're making, actually, we're putting the onus more on the applicant to tell us why they want to go from one non-conforming use to another. And non-conforming use also means grandfathering. People may be more familiar with that term. But once, you know, once you've established a use and then, say, the zoning changes, you're allowed, you know, by state statute and by the town bylaw, to continue that use. If you go out of business, you move out of town, whatever, and somebody else wants to come in and do either something similar or how we're changing it to be less detrimental, that's what this language is reflecting. And then the last article is a new regulation for us. It's part of our signed bylaw, or will be part of the signed bylaw. But there's, you know, there's volumes in the sign world about what's technically called an electronic message center. And basically, those are the, a lot of people refer to them as digital signs. But they're, or LED signs, and there's a variety of names for them. But they are known as and how we're going to reflect it in the zoning bylaw is electronic message center. So our bylaw is silent on that right now and the planning board wanted to put some parameters around that. So there's, I mean, I can certainly go through that if anyone's interested, but there's a whole formula about how, what the brightness of your sign can be. And we're limiting, or the planning board is proposing to limit those signs to what we call the Highway Business District, which is Route 9, and then the Industrial Districts. So right now, you see those signs, in my cover memo to you, cover memo to you, excuse me. We have four such signs today that are located not in the Highway Business District or the Industrial District. They will be grandfathered. And probably the two signs that most reflect really what an electronic message center is, is the one at Mo's Garage on Main Street and the Family Dental Building on West Main Street. So those, that's a sign, those are the types of signs that this bylaw will speak to.
Questions? Leslie?
Okay, yeah. And kind of in a summary statement, it sounds good in a few of these cases to be putting a box around some of these things a little bit so that they're somewhere where they can be referred to. And if there is a problem that Bob, for example, can go visit. I think it's, in some cases, it's very easy to say, you know, I'm sure there's not going to be a problem. We don't really need to worry about it. But there's always an off chance that there could be. So it just gives people somewhere to go to look it up and gives us some authority to do something about it. Am I reading that correctly?
Yep, that's exactly correct, Leslie. Bob's example that he gave to the planning board was, he didn't want to be the building inspector that shut down the lemonade stand because we didn't have zoning about a lemonade stand. So again, it came up this past year where, you know, a new vendor for Christmas trees and Reese wanted to locate in town. You know, Bob, you know, working with our zoning bylaw for the first year, you know, went right to the use table and saw that it wasn't in there and said, you know, I really would like to put some parameters around that.
And also signs, I think the more we say about it, probably the better. Because I do hear people talking about signs a lot, it's kind of a big issue. One question about that. Am I correct in that they're not supposed to be scrolling, moving? They can, it has to be stagnant?
It can't, no, they can move. The zoning bylaw allows the message to move today and it will continue to allow it. But what can't, it can't be this continuous stream like you see on the stock exchange? And that's the easiest example. And there's a specific term for that and we don't allow that.
Okay.
But it can be a changing sign. And there's industry standards about, you know, how, what your eye perceives and how, giving you time to read something. So there's, again, there's standards about that that, you know, people far more knowledgeable about signs they put together than I.
I see Kerry Martin is here, the planning board. It's a lot of work putting these, all these thoughts together and getting things ready for town meeting, so, thank you.
Jason?
Kathy, the text of these changes for the bylaws are all in the Town Meeting Warrant booklet.
Yes.
And they're also available online on the town website.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said April 9th is the continued hearing?
Yes.
So anyone who has an interest could find that information on the town website and could go to that meeting to express a concern.
Absolutely, and we have, you know, good old fashioned, you know, all this paper, paper copies available, you know, in my office and the town clerk's office also.
Thank you.
Kathy, did I hear, did I hear you correctly say that if somebody wants to sell roses for Valentine's Day, they don't need a permit?
Correct. Correct.
So how do we, like, monitor that?
Well, I mean, to date, it has not been an issue for this town, whether we've been very lucky, or it, you know, it's sort of a self-monitoring business, I mean, people, you know, it's a very specific, you know, product that they're selling and for a very specific amount of time. Probably the longest product that you'll see out there, I mean, the longest timeframe is for Christmas trees and reeds and garland, you know, that type of thing. But in the past, there has not been, you know, any regulation about that, people have been allowed to, you know, as long as they're not causing a traffic problem, you know, either myself or the building inspector would go out, you know, take a look at someone that's setting up. But again, now, what this is just doing is defining it, but we're not putting any restrictions about it, saying, you know, you can only sell them for, you know, 30 days before Christmas and two days after Christmas, or just picking that particular holiday. But then it becomes an enforcement issue that, you know, who has the staff capacity to go out and, you know, and check, you know, how many trees are being sold, how many roses are being sold? But again, if there's an issue, you know, the building inspector in particular, because he's also the zoning enforcement officer, you know, will now be able to go out, you know, point to that we have, assuming that this is adopted at town meeting, you know, that we have a definition, and again, we expanded it a little bit beyond Christmas trees.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I thank you for that, and also for the update that was included, as far as
Oh, does anyone have?
Anybody have any questions on the updates?
Just one, the building downtown that is going to be housing the bridal shop and the doctor's office, it seems to
Stopped.
stagnate. It's active for a while, and then it stops, and then they started working again, now it doesn't seem that there's anything going on. Is there a timeline for that?
I actually, about a week ago, I saw the owner and three gentlemen walking around, so I took that as a positive sign, that she has had issues, and I don't know all the details of it, but she has had some legal issue, contract issues with her contractor, and then in turn, the subs that he hired. And so Bob, again, Frederico, our building inspector, has met with her several, with the owner several times. So she's not abandoning the project, as far as we know, and she's also purchased the Bank of America building, so she owns additional real estate in our downtown.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, it's past the hour of 8:15. Andrew Dowd, Town Clerk, proposed polling location change for elections to Melikan Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm going to try to keep this under a half an hour, because I know you've been here for a while.
Sort of poking me?
Not at all. It's an excellent, excellent
Wow, tough room.
So we have some exciting changes planned for elections in Northborough. We would propose moving all the voting locations to the Melikan Middle School. The current voting locations consist of the four Northborough Elementary Schools, Peaslee, Proctor, Zee, and Lincoln, and that's where all voting is held for all both state and local elections. Combining the four locations into one space would benefit both the town and the schools. Town and school officials have been working collaboratively, and I'd like to emphasize that fact, the superintendent has been great working on this process, to identify locations that would accommodate a single polling locations, a single polling location for all four precincts. We would still have four precincts, that's what's required by law, but they could be potentially in one site. After thoroughly reviewing all potential town and school-owned buildings, all of options were fully vetted, I can assure you, and that included an ADA compliance survey, which the state conducts on any facility that may offer voting, and has to obviously meet accessibility standards. Melikan Middle School appears to be the best fit. The facility is centrally located, easy to find, and has plentiful parking. There are two areas in that facility that would be suitable for voting, that would be the cafeteria and the gym. Both of those areas are located in the wing that is furthest isolated from the student population in the building. If you're familiar with that location, the three-story block where the primary classroom spaces are, and then the wing that goes out to the left that houses the gym and the cafeteria and the offices, would be contained to that space. So our primary goal will be to utilize the cafeteria, which offers direct entry and exit points to the front of the building. Using that will allow us to keep voters segregated from the students. That being said, student safety and building security on election day is extremely important. Legitimate concerns have been raised by parents over the years regarding voting happening within the elementary schools. There's also limited parking at those sites, and it can be challenging to have voting at that location on election day. Police Department plays an integral role in the election process, and the law does require that a police officer be present within the polling place. If the precincts were consolidated into one location, we'd only be required to have one officer within that location for the four precincts. This would allow additional officers to be utilized, if necessary, to maintain building security, student safety, and also to assist with traffic on a busier election day. Moving all four voting precincts to Melikan would eliminate many of the difficulties we face at the current elementary schools, and our goal, of course, would be to have as little interruption as possible to the day-to-day schedule at the Melikan School. I strongly believe that consolidating our voting locations to Melikan will be a win-win for the town and the schools. A centralized polling location will improve efficiency and effectiveness of oversight. Many other towns in the area have consolidated their voting precincts in a similar manner with great success. That includes the town of Southborough, and they did almost the exact same thing a couple of years back, was they moved to their middle school as well, they have three precincts, they're a slightly smaller community. I've spoken with the folks over in Southborough, and that's been a very successful effort with which the superintendent was also involved. So I'm happy to take any questions and answer any concerns you may have.
It sounds like a great idea to me. Leslie?
Yeah, I do think it's a wonderful idea. As you probably recall, I spoke with you and the police chief and John about some parents who had come to me and talked about their concerns with security at the elementary schools, and the fact that typically they go from, you know, a locked situation all of a sudden, all day long, it's an unlocked front door, and some of them have a hallway off of the main lobby before you even get to the cafeteria, which meant if some rogue individual came in, they could potentially go down there, and then, police chief was very nice about accommodating that situation and having an extra police officer, so there was one at the machine and one at the front of the building inside this year. So I think it's critical to do something like this, I think it makes a whole lot of sense. Oddly enough, a couple of years ago, I actually pulled an article about the fact that Westboro had switched to one polling venue, I think to the high school.
They are at the high school, yes.
And I was going to actually bring it up at some point, and so my question, then the segue, is what is the reason that the high school couldn't be considered? Is it because it's a regional high school, or are there other factors that come into play with that?
This actually, this idea has been on my radar and my wish list for a long time, and I've had conversations with both the current superintendent and past superintendents regarding moving to another school space. Really, the only usable space within the town-owned property are the schools, you know, if we had a big community center or something, obviously, we would look to do that, but we are limited with, you know, parking and other restrictions at other town-owned buildings. The challenge at the high school, which was our first choice back quite a few years ago, we were visiting this idea, is the parking, although plentiful, if you go up there during the day, and I have a child who's currently driving a car there every day, it is almost impossible to find a parking space in that massive campus. That combined with a huge amount of traffic flow in and out, it creates a very unsafe atmosphere to, you know, interject additional people, especially those unfamiliar with the campus, to go there on voting day. So if school were in session, it would be very challenging, and we just determined, and we had some very good conversations, John and I, and Christine Johnson regarding that, that it just wouldn't work out well, and I think that made a lot of sense, and that was a primary factor in not considering that building.
Okay, okay. Great.
Thank you.
Jason?
Do you have any estimate of cost savings that would come from this change?
The good news is it wouldn't cost any more money. We may save a small amount of money. Initially, John and I actually talked about this briefly during our budget discussion, you know, we're going to still have the same amount of staff, you still have to have the same unique individuals, separated precincts.
Oh, within?
Within the space, yeah, that's what's required by law.
I see.
You know, there may be some cost savings for the police department, you know, where they had four officers at each school, and as Leslie mentioned, they had some additional staff to help with security at last year's elections, so that would save us some money. And down the road, we might save a little bit on election staff, but it's not going to be a huge cost savings, I don't think I want to pitch it in that, for that reason.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Oh, you want to vote?
Just for the record.
Do I have your motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to change the four polling locations that are currently at Peaslee, Proctor, Zee, and Lincoln Street Schools to one polling location at the Melikan Middle School, to be effective with the May 14, 2019 town election.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded in any discussion, hearing, none of those in favor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And if I could just indulge you for one more, Mona, I already thanked the school superintendent. I'd also like to acknowledge Michelle Carr, who's the principal at Melikan, we've had a couple of great meetings in discussing this idea, it will obviously have an impact on her campus, but she's also excited about it, there's a new initiative to bring back civics to the eighth grade classes, which are in her building, so they might have an opportunity to actually see their voting, you know, for real in action, so that's kind of an exciting thing to offer. And I'd also like to acknowledge the principals at the elementary schools who have really worked so well with us over the years, even though it does create a, you know, significant burden when elections happen in their schools, but they've always been great, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Okay, reports. Julianne? So I would like to thank everyone at town, on the town staff, who posted town meeting on the website, the warrant is up already, and it's on cable television, and I'm wondering if there's any other areas that we should be advertising town meeting, I guess it will go up on the Lions Club sign, now that, we know that's a very valuable sign to have in town. And does anyone know if there's a way to engage the schools with their communication ability to get the word out to parents? Leslie, I hate to put you on the spot, but I know you work closely with the schools, is there any communication email or anything that they might be willing to get notice out about town meeting?
I don't know why we couldn't, John, is there a reason we couldn't send an email to the principals? I don't know if there's any sort of, there's no weird open meeting law kind of thing, right?
Well, I mean, the schools communicate through Connect One.
Yeah.
With the phone system, so I don't, I don't know, would we want to call everybody and say, you're not going to reach everybody, would be parents of students that signed up for the call, I mean, that's the only thing, they don't really
Well, most of most
I mean, the alternative would be, you know, a backpack stuffer, but I don't, that's a lot of
Trying to get away from that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's
So
Maybe emailing the principals, see if they would put it in there.
So would that go through the superintendent, I guess?
So I'm not quite, what exactly are we asking for?
Just, you know, save the day, town meeting, April 22nd.
I know, but connected how? How would you want to do that?
So as, so I was under the impression that there is an email or electronic communication that comes from the schools to parents ever?
Yeah, it's part of their, it's part of their Connect, it's called Connect Ed, I think. Yeah, by email.
Uh-huh. Is that unwieldy, or?
I mean, I can ask them.
I think it's a good point, though, I think just a note to the superintendent, asking if that could be sent down then to each of the principals to have them include that in their weekly
Do they have a newsletter that they publish periodically?
I think all the schools differ about that.
I think each one's on its own
Yeah.
...schedule.
Yeah. How about John connects with Christine to see if she has any suggestions?
Okay.
But it is, it is important. And the only other thing is, the next White Cliffs meeting is April 2nd at 10:00 a.m., so if anyone's interested. And that's the end of my report.
Tim?
The only thing I have is, I spoke with John, just to get an update on the truck exclusion for Davis Street, and
Oh, wait a second, if I can chime in
Go ahead.
Through the chair. We got the notice today, it was improved.
All right.
Today, came in this afternoon.
There's your update, so.
Thank you very much. The signs are on order, and as soon as they're in, they should be in within about a week, they'll be installed, so we did literally came in this afternoon.
Perfect, thank you. That ends my report.
Hey, Leslie. Okay, I'm going to do my usual comment about the crosswalks, now that the weather's getting nice and people are running and walking and strolling babies and things, I just want everybody to be very, very careful at crosswalks. They're better marked, I think, getting better marked all the time, it seems, but I just want people to be very, very careful. We also have four Northborough residents who are running the Boston Marathon on Monday, April 15th, and I want to wish them luck. Jane Shou, S-H-O-U, Hong Mai Kay, C-A-I, Chris Benastad, who always runs, and he runs everything, and he's everywhere, and Christine Casella, so I want to wish them luck, I think that's terrific. And my last comment is that Jason Perro and I both attended the Algonquin Best Buddies' Second Annual Inclusion Coffee House on March 14th. It was phenomenal, and I would say that it was tear-jerking at some points. The talent and the work that went on behind the scenes to get these kids up there, and showcasing them, and there was so much pride in what they were doing, it was really just phenomenal. I just want to congratulate the kids and their parents. Algonquin Pel is saying as well, did Ladies First, and it's just the Best Buddies thing, I think, is a wonderful organization, and really empowers these kids to try and work on things, and want to come forward and perform like this, so it was really wonderful, so I want to congratulate them, and also Brian Hausman?
Yeah, yes, I believe so.
Brian Hausman, yeah, I think so, yeah. And Lori Diamond, who worked very hard to get this event going, so that ends my report.
I just echo Leslie's comments about the Best Buddies, Best Buddies Coffee House, the musicianship and the voices were just incredible, I was just really astounded by the level of talent that we observed, so it was a phenomenal show, and I expect to attend it again next year. I want to thank the Rotary for putting on their 48th Scholarship Breakfast yesterday at Peaslee. I went for the pancakes, I stayed for the jazz, had music provided first by the Sunnyside Swing Band, which I did not see, but then that was followed by the Joy of Music Program out of Worcester, so what you had was a five-piece ensemble with a guitar, two saxophones, vibraphone, and drums, and all of these kids were maybe late middle school or early high school, and once again, just a tremendous demonstration of something that I cannot do myself, so I really appreciated both the food and the entertainment, and thank all the volunteers who put in their time to raise money for a scholarship program through the Rotary Club. Friday, April 5th at 7:00 p.m. at Doubletree Hotel is New England, I'm sorry, Northborough Education Foundation Trivia Night. They're taking registrations for two to four teams, I think they usually get something like 50-something teams entered. It's raising money for Northborough Ed Foundation to do good work in the community through grants that they offer. Doors open at 7:00 o'clock, first question's at 7:30. I assume I assume the master ceremonies will once again be John Kane, who always does a phenomenal job in his tuxedo. We usually have a couple of town personnel.
It all comes down to the judging at these events, really.
It's judging, and who knows the judges, and.
[laughing].
So I'll be attending, and it's always a very good time. It's also a costume contest. Some of the teams will dress up in some kind of theme, and there's a costume award, there's a fifty-fifty raffle, all, all for the benefit of Northborough Ed Foundation, so consider that on your schedule. Once again, a reminder, Library Gala, Saturday, April sixth, that's the following night, at the Haven Country Club in Boylston, right up here off Church Street, seventy-five dollars per person. You can click through the town website to the town department's library page, and from the library page, go to the library's website, and on the library's website, you will find a slideshow, one slide of which is the advertisement for the gala. So consider that. Tickets need to be purchased in advance, so please take a look at that and support the library. While I was at Peaslee yesterday for pancakes and music, I also met the Northborough Town Common Group, who is doing a campaign to sell commemorative bricks at a hundred dollars apiece, so the funding through the brick sales will provide money for further enhancements to the Town Common Project. If you're interested in that, you can Google Northborough Town Common, you'll find their Facebook page. On their Facebook page, you will find the form in order to purchase your brick with whatever inscription you would like to have on there. And then finally, just a couple of items that I happened to notice in the newspapers. There are two Algonquin students who received awards for the Massachusetts Scholastic Art and Writing. Elsa Kay and Catherine Colglazer both took home gold keys, silver keys, and honorable mentions in writing, and Catherine Colglazer also got an honorable mention in, for an art project that she submitted. And then finally, we had a, a group at Algonquin at the Mass Educational Theater Guild Drama Festival who won the Ensemble Award for their presentation of the play Proof, which is a Pulitzer and Tony Award-winning play, featuring four actors, Catherine Maffa, Nick Hatton, Annalise Loizo, and Joe Gordon. A lot of the awards for this program go to individual actors. This in particular was an Ensemble Award that recognized the excellent interaction and, and collaborative effort they did in bringing this show forward, so just want to congratulate them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And I also went to the forty-eighth Rotary Breakfast, but I was the early riser.
You were early.
Because I saw the jazz band. And just for the record, it's a great event, not only are the pancakes good and the entertainment's good, but all the profit that they receive from this event goes to scholarships for Northborough kids. So it's always good, and it was as good as it always is, so. And a reminder, on April fourth, we're gonna have a busy week that week, I guess.
That's right.
Is the Fire Building Committee presentation at the library at seven p.m. And that concludes my report. John?
No report this evening?
Okay. Okay, public comments. Yes.
Couple of things. Last Monday was career.
State's name?
They had ninety presenters. I've done it for two years, it's interesting presenting to these kids. Try to tell them fifty-six years of experience in twenty minutes. And ask questions, some will ask and some won't ask. It's a very good project, it's the second year they've had it, and like I said, it was ninety different presenters. My name is Henry Scolani, seventy-two Crestwood Drive. The other thing, a question came up today at one of my board meetings about needle disposal in town. Do we have a, do we have a place to drop off needles?
Are there the chiefs, Monica?
No, I can comment on that. So the Board of Health has been working on that. Shattuck used to do it, and then they went retired and no longer accepting. And so we've been trying to work with CVS, and we were trying to work, we have several new medical facilities in town, so we have UMass Memorial, we have Saint V's, there's a Medi Works Place, so we're trying to work with one of those to see if they'd, they'd accept the, the Sharps. So the Board of Health agent's trying to work on something for us.
So at this point in time, we don't?
At the moment, no.
Can I just make one more comment? Is that possible?
Okay, I just want to make a correction. It's Kevin Housman at the high school. I just remembered that was Kevin. And I also wanted to point out that there was a nice picture of Mitch Cohen, who's on the trustees for the library.
With the fantastic quilt.
Yes.
Made by Terry.
Yes. And standing with Chris Lindquist, who's the library director, talking about the gala, so. It's very nice, very nice, yes, thank you.
Okay. Public comments, hearing none. Okay, new business. Letter of support for Senate Bill four thirty-five, an act regarding agricultural composting programs. Done.
At your meeting last, two weeks ago, you had the legislative delegation in. One of the items that we discussed in terms of our priorities for this upcoming legislative session was a support of Senate Bill four thirty-five, which is our composting, proposed composting legislation. Senator Chandler specifically requested a written letter of support, and so in your packet is a draft of that letter for your review and approval this evening, and if you authorize it, we can get that right out. The letter's addressed to the Joint Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture. That's the committee who will be tasked with reviewing and recommending our legislation, and we are copying all of our legislative delegation. The only thing, other thing I'd mention is I did reach out to the Board of Selectment in Berlin, who fought at least one of our composting situations, and they have also sent a letter of support as well.
That's great. Okay, any questions? Julianne.
Well, I'll have to recuse myself again on this vote.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to send the letter as presented in draft form this evening to the Joint Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture in support of Senate Bill four thirty-five, an act regarding agricultural composting programs.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded in any other discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor. Okay, approve and execute the warrant for the annual town meeting. Do I hear a motion?
If I may, just a couple of clarifications, I want you to be aware of a couple of things before you approve it. So it went to town council, there were a couple of articles that, three articles that have been deleted. And one of the things I asked council to do in his review was to try to streamline things, if there are articles that we don't need to have in here every year. Last year, we condensed all of the revolving fund articles to one with bylaw. So the three that were deleted, one was the personnel bylaw, because it's actually provided for in the, in the bylaw itself, that the non-union folks get the average union contracts once they're settled. The other two, one, the other two are the library article for acceptance of state aid. There is no reason that that needs to happen, they have the authority to accept and expend state aid. The other is one of the board's selectmen articles, and that is for you to apply for grants. You have that authority by virtue of statute to apply for grants. So my suggestion, and what's before you tonight, is that those articles are not in, so we have forty-one articles now. Again, there's nothing, there's no reason to have those, according to town council.
Thank you.
Otherwise, the warrant that you have is complete, all of the budget numbers are in here, all of the tables, and Julian Hirsch stole my thunder. It's already on the website, in case anybody wants to see it, so feel free to download it and read it to your heart's content.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I think I have to change this a little. I move the board vote to approve the annual town meeting warrant as presented and added?
No, no, what's in your packet is as presented.
So the changes that you?
Are in the packet that you have before you this evening.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I just wanted to call the board's attention to them.
Okay.
So it's explicit.
All right, then I'll start again. I move the board vote to approve the annual town meeting warrant as presented, and further that the warrant be posted as required by Town Code one dash eighty dash zero three zero, no later than April eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. The next item is approve and execute the warrant for the annual town election.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the warrant for the May fourteenth, twenty nineteen annual town election.
Second. Which is the main seconded in any discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor. Any other business to come before the board? Okay, we're going to have an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, subsection three, litigation re essay farms, collective bargaining, renegotiation strategy. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, subsection three, litigation re essay farms, collective bargaining, renegotiation strategy. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Julianne.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
Aye.
And we will only come out of executive session to adjourn an open session.